I will call the meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please read the roll?
Hoffman.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
We do have a form.
Thank you. Let us stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Zach, did you read the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation and a democracy.
Do we have any order of business for emergencies?
No.
Any attendance on Zoom?
Nope.
The police report is in your packet today. They will be here at the next meeting to report. They were needed in other places. And I would accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
So who?
Dan has moved.
Sorry.
And Jerry seconded.
I think it's Stan. It was between them. I think it was Stan.
Okay. Stan has seconded, Katie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does anyone have a conflict of interest they need to declare tonight at this point? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the August fifteenth city council meeting that were included in your packet.
So move.
Okay, Zach has moved. Jerry has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also in your packet today was the claims for the city of Wall, the fire department, and the library. Would I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Stan moved.
Second.
And Dan has seconded. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. In your packets also for your review was the employee overtime sick and vacation report and the on-schedule, the sales tax report. And Rick, you were just commenting about that and you'd like to share that.
Okay, Stan was commenting.
Oh, Stan was commenting.
Uh, yeah.
I'm with.
Sales tax and the BBB.
Oh, well, it appears that this says through August, it really means July, we're down. Last year we've been at a million sixty-five thousand and we're at a million five. We were down a little more than that. That's going to boost taxes up later. One hundred and fourteen thousand last year, two thousand one hundred and twenty-two this year.
But Rick, you're commenting about what's going on in the hills.
Well, like, our, our August was up a little bit over last year, like a quarter point, but it's nice to be ahead at Waldorf. And then, but in the hills, I heard Mount Rushmore was down thirty percent in visitation. I don't get that. I'd like to have a little more insight into that. And fifteen percent in revenue. And then some of the hotels in the hills are down as much as twenty-five percent. And I think our hotels are competitive with last year, which is awesome.
So we actually need to be somewhat grateful for that.
Oh, I, I, well, I think so.
You know, there's one city that's moderate, moderate, they'll see, I'm really part of it. They have, they've had a lot of construction there. Might be hurt.
It's, it's, it's very rugged up there. Yes, their construction was astronomical. Okay, so also included in that packet was the golf course financials, the budget report, the fire department minutes for both June eleventh and July second. And also to review the building permit that for Colton Tinas, he moved in a shed at twenty-ninth Great Road. And that was reviewed by Carolyn and Garrett, and that form is in that packet. So is there any questions about any of those items?
I ask one, just curiosity.
Absolutely.
On our expense, the budget under place were over by twenty-one thousand per the year. Am I reading that right? Just under other expenses. And all of some other ones like Port Avenue, the airport, but that's up.
Right. I'd have to take a look at that. I may have erred in the code of putting in an expense, but I do feel like when we had this budget done, I think there was a change to how many long courses we were going on. But I'll, I'll look back in the future.
Okay, any other questions? And you can get back to us on that information. Okay, that brings us to item twelve. And that is an agenda request. Carrie McCarthy. Do you like to talk to us about your request?
Oh, true. I can just, in case there was any questions, just explain what I wanted. I wanted to raise quails in the back of the park. I live on Dorothy Street in the Parsonage. Just for eggs. And they would be in a rabbit hutch. They're not like in a pen or free roaming. They would be in a, in a rabbit hutch about five feet by two feet. And they spend their whole time there. So that's, I, I read the ordinances and I was like, I, I'm new and this is my third year here in Wall. And it said like no ducks or other fowl. So other fowl would be include quail. But I know chickens are allowed, hens. So I was wondering if you would hear my request for the hen and quails. They're well, ten ounce birds.
Quails are active quieter than chickens.
They are.
Some communities will allow quail, but they won't allow chickens.
Interesting.
Yeah, there's like, sorry.
No, and that's probably why the, like, duck and geese are on there because they're so loud and stuff.
I was gonna say like apartments in New York City allow them in their balcony.
So you are correct. The ordinance does say no person shall keep within the city any ducks, geese, or other domesticated fowl. And quail would fall under domesticated fowl. However, we did, I see that at one point we did, someone did add chickens. So I, what are your thoughts as a city council? Is this something that, we have an animal control committee and that is Stan. And Rick, would you like to have a conversation with her and work with something and try to bring something back in terms of a recommendation or?
Well, I guess I'm good, but given our variance.
I'm kind of on the same page. It doesn't, it sounds like a reasonable request and, and they're quiet.
Yeah.
How many were you wanting?
Um, it's maybe no more than about two per square foot. So I'm thinking I would have about about six square foot, so no more than about twelve hens.
What is the, ten?
Oh, my bad thing, I can't say I have nothing against it other than we're supposed to help the neighbors sign off.
I did have one of the neighbors that would be two. Oh, I don't know where they live, but would it be two of them? No, she lives on another block. They just came in together, I think. Oh, okay. Something Cindy Weaver actually came in and said that she had no problem. She knew that it might be a consideration for neighbors approving that to whatever. And she wanted, seen it on the agenda and she wanted to make sure the council was aware that she has no problem with the law.
I didn't talk to her too.
So.
Then there is no neighbor to, to the south or?
Yeah, I think he's in a, that's social, looking at him.
Right, like, being the same as a chicken permit? Just get those signatures as required and the neighbors are there with it?
Well, I, I agree, I think there should be signatures. But I really sincerely think that we need to get quails somehow in this, in the ordinance rather than.
Grand variance.
Right. And so that was my point is if, look at what they did for quails, could you put chickens and quails? I don't know that, but that's why I'm just saying that you two can make, meet with her, make a recommendation, bring it back. And then what's the process from there, Carolyn, that it would be a?
Go through two readings to make the change.
And then we'd actually be following our ordinance.
Awesome.
Okay.
Are you in a hurry to do it?
Uh, not, not really. I mean, I would like before it snows to get them started. So they can get back from they did before.
Can you get it done before it snows?
I don't think so.
Could be October fifth, but just.
There's no hurry, just not when there are little babies.
I can get a, the committee to meet and hope and we to put it on the next meeting agenda for a first reading. Then the second reading would be October third, I think it's that date. So I mean, it would be done before the end of October.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. On the poll. Is that also, i- i- is it just for outdoor birds that the ordinance is for or is that also indoor as well? So I was just thinking you want to say someone wants a parakeet, if that's not included or included in the ordinance?
No, we don't restrict any.
No.
Okay, but I didn't know how the, I didn't know how the ordinance related to that. So if you're discussing fowl, so just outdoor?
Outside.
Okay.
Kind of on the same line as cows, goats, sheep, hogs, pigs. None of those are, are allowed unless they're in a pen getting ready to load on the train.
Boy, that's annoying. They're not.
We need to kind of update that one. So, okay. So, thank you very much and welcome to Wall if you've been here for three years.
Yeah.
But thank you. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to public comments. In this time, any member of the public can discuss or express concerns to the council with any issue on or not on the agenda. And it would be a three-minute address. And I know Dr. Prouser needs to go back to a concession stand. So would you like to take this moment in time and?
Yeah, you'll have to time, you'll have to time me, but because I was here so long last time, I will be very short. Full of started, that's about all I can say. But there are three things that I just want to share that are exciting that kind of connect with the city. One, if you haven't taken time, it's kind of fun to listen to South Dakota Public Radio interviewed me along with a couple other superintendents. And so it's, I put the link on our Facebook page and I tried to kind of tell where the, the twenty-minute piece is. But it was fun to visit about Wall and our school with the rest of the state. And I've had feedback from all parts of the state. So that was fun. On Wednesday, September eleventh, the bank normally does their volunteer day. And this year they're going to come and for our juniors and seniors, they are going to have a full-size life, game of life with our juniors and seniors. So there are businesses from town coming into the school, setting up like insurance company, the bank. And the kids have to draw their card and they maybe get three wives and two cars and, you know, and houses. They've got a whole set it all up. It's really going to be fun to try to teach our kids a little bit of financial literacy and just life. I'm teaching the internship class. My assistant principal is helping me for the month, we've totally changed it. For the month of September, we have speakers coming in every day talking about their careers. I have everything from land surveyors, construction to SERP out of the Sanford Mine. I guess SERP Sanford Underground Mine. They're coming in and talking about all the careers that are like caterpillar training, some of their guys underground. There are just so many careers. So they're coming in, we have speakers coming in. I also then have kids getting interned. I've got one-hour interns and I have two-hour interns. So if there are any folks that want a one-hour intern, some of my kids already kind of have an idea of what they want, but I want these kids exposed to things beyond doing dad's chores. And so that's been exciting to get that going. The last thing that just came about today, really exciting, Meals on Wheels was cut, I understand. And so we're taking it over. And so we're going to cook the meals for them. My kids are going to deliver. We're going to pack the meals. And so there goes that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're kind of excited. I said that's a great opportunity for our kids. And we will charge just a adult price, five dollars and twenty-five cents. And Melanie Scholl came in, we worked through the details today, and so we'll start that on Monday.
Dr. Prouser, how many meals?
Up to fifteen, but then we'll give them the calendar and they can choose. Maybe they don't want sloppy joes tomorrow, it may be. But I understand two to three house deliveries and then the rest go to private. Yeah, so up to fifteen. So, yeah, that's kind of exciting.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Good job, good job.
We're having fun.
And thank you for promoting Wall on South Dakota Public Radio. Good job, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to a concession stand.
Okay, is there any other public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. Item number fourteen. Hollap Platte in NAP first edition. And I believe you have a map in your packet. So Carolyn, tell us about this.
Well, this was just given to me by Grant and Patrick. And you can see on there where their proposal is to flat out a piece of land that, and I think intentions is for the cannabis dispensary. They want to speak.
Hello.
How are you, Ms. Mayor? How are you doing?
Very good, thank you, sir.
Good, your name is Kid Jeffries. I'm from Rapid City, I represent Puppies Dispensary. I've come up and spoke to you guys a few times before. It's always great coming back to the city of Wal. Working with Mr. Hollap on a plat down on his brand new property he just recently purchased. We are looking at it as a viable option to put the medical cannabis dispensary for puppies. One of the things to just really keep our eye on the ball is that in no way, shape, or form tonight, by approving the plat, are you approving the medical cannabis establishment for that location. What this allows us to do is the opportunity to continue through the application process so that when we work with Caroline and finally submit that application, that will go through, back to the city council. The city council have the opportunity to review a full plan and through that full plan, make your final decision on whether or not that that property is going to be a viable location. And this is kind of a parallel path from conversations we've had at this council previously. Working with Mr. Hollap is a parallel path to Mr. Hanson's property down south of the cabins near where the love travel stop was going to go. Because of all the things that happened over there, I feel it's our best intention as business professionals in South Dakota to run this parallel path. Just to make sure that we're abiding by all the rules and regulations and making sure that the city council feels comfortable in approving either one of those locations as a viable option for a medical cannabis establishment in Wall. But again, just to reiterate, this is in no way, shape, or form approving an establishment in Wall. In the event that we submit our application and the city council finds that this is not a viable spot for that, this still allows Mr. Hollap the opportunity to develop that property as a commercially zoned property in the future for whatever he may do in the event of those circumstances. So I appreciate everybody's time and I can answer any questions.
Oh, it's ninety feet by one seventy-five?
I believe so.
So are we approving this piece or are we approving the outside?
The small parcel up in the top northeast corner. North west corner, sorry.
It's ninety feet by one hundred and eighty-five.
Yep.
So right on the?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, northwest.
But I saw a similar line all the way around the outside. So I was just trying to clarify if we're talking specifically about this or if we were doing the whole area.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're saying right here.
Just that little area there.
Okay.
Yep.
So Carolyn, if this is approved, then what is the next step for Grant? And Mr. Jeffrey?
It will be to bring forward the building application, if that is what we want to do.
No, what happens to this?
Oh, it has to go to the county to get put in the books.
So, and in order to do that, we need to have it approved and we need to sign off on this so that they can?
Yeah, so that's not the actual.
No, I, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, the plaque has.
It's actually a huge, yeah. So that's what we're doing is just making it possible for these gentlemen to move it to the county. Okay?
If I may clarify, without it, it's allowed to move to the county. We'd still come back and work with Carolyn on the medical cannabis application itself. And then after the county gives final approval and processes that, we would come back before this council with a full plan for the application. Once that application would then be approved, if that's how the council deems it fit, then we would come back with building plans and things like that to, we would erect a building. There is sewer and electricity. All utilities are readily available on that property, which is, makes it really easy for us. But we, we have a really good team of engineers that we work with at other locations. And they do a pretty darn good job.
I get a question. You represent puppies, so you would like to make that, but isn't there housing right across the street? What's our ordinance say? Medical marijuana in with house, public houses right across the street.
So how it reads is that if it's in a residential zone, if it's, if it would be permitted in a residential zone, it needs to be two hundred feet from a resident.
I am curious.
But he's in a commercial zone.
Which, within that two-hundred-foot boundary would still require sort of easement or variance in that, it would still need to come back for the approval of the city council.
Except this is just.
Yeah, just approve the plat and actually we can have all the fun marijuana conversations at the next city council meeting. And maybe in November, who knows? So I appreciate you guys' time, thank you.
A motion to approve the plot.
Okay. Zach has moved, Dan has seconded to approve the plat of NAP first edition. Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next on the agenda is a motion for second reading on ordinance twenty-four-one, the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Dan has moved.
So did.
Zach has seconded. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those?
I don't have a comment, but I'll. My comment is I'm a little disappointed that we aren't having our attorney review the document. I can't, that's why I have an attorney, I can't see any reason why. I also don't believe we gave enough time to the public. A year and a half was made at this time. Run through two city council meetings. Ninety-five days at home.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty much on the same page as Stan. I was on planning and zoning and color. I, I don't think I missed a meeting on that and now. And being in all those meetings, there's still things I didn't understand about the ordinance. And I wanted our attorney to look at it just from a legal standpoint and, and and I'm not, I won't vote for it at this point.
Okay. All right.
I think with sixteen months of open public plans, I mean, meetings that there's been enough time for the public to have discussions with that and it's been put in the newspaper. That's, it should, and people have the chance to come and speak on it. This is a great way to set a base for ordinances that need to be gone through and redone. So I'm going to vote yes on this.
Well, we still, we didn't have any public, ended up, we have one public hearing.
That's all that's required. Well, yeah. Yeah, that's right. We had the planning commission had a public hearing and then this council meeting had a public hearing.
I'm going to say, but she's got seventeen years experience. She kind of wrote it up towards our municipality, but it's based up mostly towns I'm gathering in South Dakota. And apologize, Steph does not know planning and zoning. She's got seventeen years in and if they spent that much time, this all can be adjusted. We can make changes, everything else, but we need to put our foot down and do a, get something on the book so we can get started. And we will eventually have to come up with, oh, we need to adjust this a little bit and we'll all get to vote on it and so.
We need to add coils.
Yeah. It happens at state law level, it happens in businesses, policies change or get updated. And that's what we're doing here.
And even Mr. Hay that, that, he said, you'll never get this perfect, you can work on it forever. So let's get it and then we can, we can, we can get that as we go.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Stan Anderson.
No.
Houston.
No.
Hawk.
Yes.
Mike Anderson.
No.
We have a three yes and three no.
Okay, so that brings us to a tie. I'm going to break it, is that correct? And that would be, I'm going to vote yes. With that, motion carries. Okay, next on the motion are on the agenda is number sixteen, which is a building permit from Randall Post. And he is, is in the process of already building in addition to his house at seven oh five North Street.
And I would just like to comment at this time. I tried calling to let him know, I left a message that he was building without getting the building permit and did not get a call back. And then I finally wrote the letter. I was just trying to be nice by making the call, but decided that wasn't going to get any results, so. I wrote the letter, had it delivered by law enforcement and he came in then with it. And in the letter, I did say because we can due to not getting the permit ahead of time, that he would get a penalty for that. due to not getting the permit ahead of time, that he would get a penalty for that. And when he came in, I explained again, I said, just so you know, you could get a penalty because you started building. I know, I keep forgetting. I've looked back and he has built three times without getting the building permit. And always had to get a letter. And one of the letters that he was given was also that he had built a fence in his front yard, which is not allowed by ordinance. He indicated at that meeting that it was due to him having a grandchild and he was afraid of her running out into the street. And so the council allowed it until the child was grown up, that was nine years ago. I do believe the child probably knows not to run into the street, so. I would like approval to that the letter and tell him he needs to remove his fence now because the child does not need to.
You're talking about fences in the front.
Yes. And my opinion, I really think he needs to have a fine. And maybe he'll learn the next time to get his building permit beforehand. I, I mean, one time I understand, you know, people don't maybe know what they need to have for building permit, but one was just a year ago. I'm sorry that you can't remember a year ago. So, my opinion is, just wanted to give you some history, I'll let you decide how to proceed.
The, the fence, was that, was that noted in the minutes of that meeting? That it was a.
Temporary until his grandchild.
Was.
No, that's what it says, it was a temporary.
And that he was supposed to remove it uh when the child was hugged.
It didn't say the year or anything.
No. I was looking through all that motion.
I feel maybe I'll abstain. But again, I wanna say I just pummel against our ordinance, we can't have a fence in my front yard, I just, that irritates the heck out of me.
Jerry, ex- explain that. Our ordinance that you can't have a fence in your front yard.
Past the front of your house. And I'm sorry, Dan, Dan's house happens to face this way right beside mine, so he can have a fence right beside where I can't have a fence.
Cause it's to his side.
It's just a weird ordinance, people, and I'm gonna say with the people on Glen Street, they got young kids, we can't get that traffic to slow down. I would think we ought to have something on that ordinance, but it would lead to be kept up, it would, sorry, that fence built, it irritates me.
Does that include chain link though?
There's several properties.
They, yeah, there's several properties that have the chain link. Their front, all the way to the sidewalk.
They were allowed.
But in this.
They give it their end?
I believe so.
In this particular case, there is minutes that indicate that that fence was allowed. Think, do you have that?
Randall Post addressed the council with request for variance on his fence that was built in the front yard. Right, ordinance fences are not allowed to be built in the front yard. Post wanted the fence to keep his granddaughter from running into the street and plans to remove it when she is a little older.
What, what year was that?
Sixteen.
So, some of you were on the council when you approved that for temporary situation, so what is your?
I, I have a, just a question, I'm gonna throw out there. What's I hear behind uh no fences in the front yard, is it a safety issue? Well, and that's what I, I would. Vision, yeah, next to a sidewalk. Even on the corners. It's obstructing vision.
Oh, okay, there you go. What's our new ordinance say?
So.
There were no changes.
Same deal one.
Were no changes, because I was told we need significant, or he took a significant time on writing this thing, and that is noted. We didn't change anything regarding.
As I, as far as I'm concerned, I understand the fence thing and people putting a six-foot wooden fence or even, you know, a four-foot wooden fence for people or children or animals walking down the sidewalk or whatever, but a chain link fence, I to the, to the sidewalk, you know, it doesn't make much sense why we can't have that.
But that can be changed later on, I'm just placing my opinion and please don't take my opinion, cause I need to abstain from this. I'm just giving you my opinion. But I will not make a decision helping you on the Randall Post one.
Okay, and, and I'm just ask, I'm just pointing out that you folks, most of you are still on this council, that you allowed him that variance, we need to put limitations on it and Carolyn's question is now, do we need to ask it to be removed um or not? Do you want to live up to what you put out there?
Does he have any other grandchildren or is it just the one? I don't, I think he probably needs to come in front of the council so that we can ask him and he's the one that said that he would take it down when she was a little older, so I don't have. Oh, he, he did say that. So, I don't.
Yeah, he had, he appeared before the city council, that's what the minutes say.
Oh, oh.
And he said that he would, that's what he would do. If you would allow him to keep the fence, cause did he build the fence before he built the fence? Then he came, you'll leave it, if you let me leave it, I'll take it down when the child is older.
So, I would say we just, he needs to maybe come in front of the council then and.
I mean, I can draft the letter and remind him of this section that, you know, where it would be removed and give him the option that if he does want to keep it up for other reasons to come before the council.
And I, and I don't believe that that is um, you know, what I would call a permanent type fence, I think it's like golden wire. I mean, it doesn't have like a top rail. It was more of a temporary type fence when he put it in. Yeah, so, yes, take it down then he comes to the meeting and just to have a conversation so that we can ask some questions.
Okay, so we kind of have several things going here, we're, we're, we are giving um, we're agreeing that Carolyn can draft that letter and send it, asking him or reminding him, he said he'd take it down, if not, he needs to come to the council. The other piece of this is that she's asked if there needs to be a fine because it's three times that he's unreflected to come in. And also there is a billing uh permit for the house that I don't know if you've been by there, but um, we're just now seeing the building permit at this point. So, what, where are you at on the fine? And then are you going to approve the permit? Do I have a motion or a suggestion? It seems we're in consensus as far as the letter regarding the fence. Would we add um a fine?
What would the fine be?
You can find up to five hundred.
So, it's a twenty-three, like twenty-four billion, it's been a three thousand dollars on.
I, I wondered about that myself, because if you's.
I guess as far as a fine, as far as I know, we don't have a very good history of finding people, I don't believe.
Well, no, if a person does something once, but.
Right.
I'm just saying, three times is kind of.
Doesn't it seem that way, sorry, on our signs and everything, people put signs up and then they come to us to ask for permits and the sign's already up. That maybe our fines need to be harder. I think they'll always do it and ask for forgiveness later.
Yeah, I was gonna say about that. Well, even if, even if they can't have it, um and there's no fine, maybe they just have to take it down till they come in, wait till the next meeting and if the council has any questions and Garrett looks at it and it needs all approval, then, you know, but, you know, I think that.
Done, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're not gonna ask.
Well, I mean, that can happen.
Right.
It could not get approved, but, I mean, with this, with the whole sign thing, and I think that's part of the problem is, is, I, I mean, I understand that that, that people get busy and sometimes it, it slips their mind, but um I think if we can kind of get to the point where a couple of times, maybe people don't, they have to take it down, come to the meeting and need approval and then get, but I think that will carry pretty quickly, so.
Okay, so.
Along the bright side, cause lots should be getting filled up there pretty well. Didn't have much more to build on.
Okay, so.
I, I make a motion to approve his building permit with the fifty dollar fine.
Okay.
How much fine, fifty? I mean, if we're gonna need to start, I mean, doing it or, or just say we're not gonna find anybody at all and not mess with it.
And, and, and Dan is, is, and then for the approval to follow through, he's gotta pay the fine. Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so there's been a motion to approve the building permit and assess a fifty dollar fine. Is there a second? Or did somebody second, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Rick has seconded, any further discussion, questions?
So, what are you paying, that he has to pay fifty dollars plus, what do you have?
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
Has he already paid the seventy-five?
We have paid the seventy-five.
Okay.
I would like to abstain from this voting.
Okay.
Should tell relation.
Yes, understand. Okay, any other discussion or questions or comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That brings us to um resolution twenty-four oh five. And this is in regard to annexation of the Morningside with city property and the, and Hancock.
So, to start out, um there was a request from the county to um vacate that section line because of where some of Hancock's building was. And just to refresh, I think a lot of you weren't in support of that, um kind of different views on that. In that process, I realized that the property to the west of Hancock's property is city property and it's outside the city limits, which kind of doesn't make sense when we have our property outside of our city limits. Not that we exempt our, you know, property tax, whatever, but it just makes sense, we would encompass our whole. I mean, that happened actually with the golf course, I guess, it was outside the city limits and they got announced, and so it kind of just makes sense. And of course Hancock's property is right in the middle there, you know, I mean, if you didn't bring him in, it would be a dominant there, so, and he is in favor of wanting to come in uh to the city. He already does get city services, um so, uh drafted the resolution on that and uh when he comes in, his zoning will change. And so there will need to be a planning commission meeting, hearing on that, which I had already scheduled due to the timeline of getting that um published to uh rezone to residential then. Just to give you some history on that.
The city stuff, does that include the shooting range out there or the shooting shot?
Yes.
Okay. And like, they don't know.
Okay.
I mean, that whole area makes sense that that, one little corner, especially if you ever want to put the city one in there, it makes sense that it is probably in the city.
Yeah. So, you need a motion to approve?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve to annex the Morningside property and the Hancock according to resolution twenty-four oh five. Um, and was there a discussion at one time about we are not gonna vacate that section line? And when does that discussion need to occur or?
I think we'd have to have a discussion if they wanted to pursue that part, so if there's no pursuing of vacating, there needs to, there does need to be discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we were kind of off the hook on that.
Yeah, okay, so then is there a fence that has to be considered then? And what's that? At what point does that have to be addressed?
My opinion, yeah.
But not really, I guess, not really an issue, but maybe gradually, it will just to the left.
Okay.
I guess it should, he, he might, uh it's my opinion, I don't see any reason to make him take the fence down, but he if something ever happens down the road, we haven't vacated it, I think we could probably make him do that.
Well, and if, if they, if they sell the house and it's moved, then, then I think the fence would be taken down and everything then.
Yeah, isn't the fence kind of a decorative fence?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a containing.
Privacy fence by, but, but yeah, but, I mean, by a tactic tender, but I would assume if the house is gone, they wouldn't leave the fence.
Well, there's new houses gonna be right.
Right there in front. I, I don't know, I just recall that being a conversational one time and if that was still the thought process, I wanted to make sure.
The new house, yeah.
Only, is only, are we talking just a few feet on that campus, I can't remember where it was.
Versus. I guess I, I don't either.
I do have pictures here, probably.
But the current road, you know, that goes to the um north is kind of west of.
Yeah, it's not, it's right, yeah.
For whatever reason, I have no idea. Well, yeah, you can kind of see where the road runs, cause when you get down there, you gotta go around water to the west.
Yeah.
So, that's the actual access road to the, to the dam, but it's not the section line, right?
Right, right.
The section line is right and straight with the golf course road.
Yeah, but all, all the road is on city property.
Okay. Have we had a motion? And a second?
More than a second.
Is there any further discussion? Jerry is abstaining, all those in favor say aye.
No.
I'm voting, I'm gonna see the vote.
Oh, sorry, that was a previously, sorry, so. Tried to leave you out all the way around, I apologize. Alright, um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh, that brings us to item number nineteen, which is the tax levy request. Can you talk to us about that, please, Karen?
Nineteen should be the resolution. Oh, no, I added something else.
Oh, no, I, I missed eighteen, resolution twenty-four oh six. And that is to do with the initiated measure.
Right.
So, Carolyn, please.
Well, I spoke at the last meeting, cause I had attended a um committee meeting and shared, you know, some material with you guys on the item twenty-eight. And so, a lot of towns are approving a resolution to support voting against the item twenty-eight because it would be detrimental to the city if it was to go through.
Okay, in fact, this resolution even says how detrimental it would be to walk.
And the state.
They make it sound real good to the normal person, well, because old man, look at the money we can save on our food, yeah, well. And there's, it's gonna come from somewhere else then.
Right now, there's a sixty two percent approval rating, you know. They polled it and which is frightening. But i- if if we adopt this. We're dying for it, uh it doesn't. It's just our opinion, right?
Yeah, it's and then it's published in the paper along with the minutes that we're in support of voting against item twenty eight, so.
So the polls say it's fifty.
Sixty two percent favorable rating, because I I studied all the the nine ballot issues. Today and and in uh. Yeah, it's frightening how 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 high the approval rate is on that, ju- just the impact and and I've heard the impact for the state government. Anyway.
Tax cuts always sound good.
Of course.
But when you read the fine print, then.
So the the and that was maybe at the last meeting, but uh that which I may also, but the that letter from the attorney, what what the purpose of that?
Well, there was some discussion that as a municipalities, we. Shouldn't take a political stance or something like that, but that is not, they got the attorney's opinion on that.
Oh, that's what all that, oh, that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because some, it was on the list serve, you know, that they, he, this was coming out and. Asking for uh municipalities to pass a resolution in support of opposing the. Initiative measure and then it got out there that, well, as a municipality, is that, isn't that illegal for us to do and all and then. The municipal league got the attorney to draft that to show that it's not illegal.
I'd originally thought of red that it would just. Take it off the. Or the state sales tax, not.
There's just so many things about it and it that's what, it's just not a really well-written, clear bill and so that's why. To they want to oppose it because there's too many.
Right. Interpretations.
Yes.
Okay. So would I have a motion to approve uh resolution twenty four oh six? Uh to oppose initiated measure twenty eight.
So second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, along with that same idea, I have been invited as a mayor to sign on to a letter that will be published across the state. And when I have the consensus of you to agree, uh the mayor from Sioux Falls was the one that sent that out. And they wanna um indicate that every, or a lot of mayors in the state. Uh are opposing this to get people's attention, so would that be, I have a consensus that that's defensible for me to do. Okay. All right, so then that brings us now to the tax levy request.
And this is just our normal, um we have to approve it in order to get any. Property tax revenue and it's a good time for budgeting purposes as well, so. This is what the county sends us.
I checked with her the last year.
Oh. Um I think there's about. Maybe about ten thousand dollars difference. We were like three ninety something last year.
I move to approve.
Please, Dan is moved.
Second.
Dan has seconded, any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, finance officer report.
Um so the annual conference is coming up that it does every year in October and it will be. Um October eighth through the eleventh in Sioux Falls this year. Um I did have October eighth down there, but um I would like. To actually go down on the seventh. I just got an email today that the new software that I'm switching over to. They have planned a. Training type session the day before this conference and I think it would be well worth my time to go down and. Learn more about it and be one-on-one with some people rather than just always. Them making correction and helping me while I watch the mouths move around instead of face-to-face, you know, so. Um I would actually leave on the seventh because it's the. From eight to noon on the eighth that they scheduled this and the eighth is when. That night is when we have our municipal league executive board meet. And so I'd always be in attendance of that, and so the conference is actually the night. I would like approval to attend that.
Okay, do I have, do do you need consensus or a motion?
I've always gotten approval to attend things, I guess, just to have it.
Yes, so do you want a motion that says that you, okay, I um asked for a motion then to approve Carolyn. Attending the Subco- Municipal League Annual Conference from October seventh to the eleventh in Sioux Falls.
So moved.
Rick's moved.
Second.
And Jerry has seconded. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and I sent out the budget request letters and asked for them to come back by. September ninth, that Monday.
Yes.
Yes. So um I will be starting that process and get those numbers together and. Um so just to let you know on that and something else I had on there, but I just got information on that today too, but. Our six hundred thousand dollar grant that we had received for the Fourth Avenue project is in the bank. And I would like to thank um. I had been working with this for quite some time. I didn't know what the process was because I haven't received a grant like this before and um. Thought I just needed to submit the invoices that are the pay requests that we had gotten, but. Things had to be pulled out of there because this grant was actually just for the road, so all of the water and sewer footprints had to come out. And um so Black Hills Council of Local Governments, in fact, the gal that was here, Greta, the little blonde gal, she um. Worked that process through first to make this happen, so thank you to them for that. So I just wanted to share that good bit of news and that's all I have.
Is part of that one completely done?
No. There is still.
Somebody asked me about some driveway work that they did, Phil's Colt right there.
Yep, there'll be a walkthrough. I'm not sure um when that's gonna happen. I'm understanding that they're starting to do some cleanup or finish up over on the ground um. B J Dart's property, I want to say Crown property, but um little things like that and stuff and. Need to send an email to the engineer. I've kind of started a list of. Comments from residents over there that things that were told of that would happen when they got done with the project. And they just want to make sure it does happen, so I'm.
And the government rather wrote tracks to Zach going.
The bump, that's one of the comments and actually that did come from an engineer. He kind of did a punch list, but. Um in an email, did you see that or?
Well, I thought he handed it out last time. Didn't he give us a punch list? I have one, I think.
Email or if it was, so so that is a comment on there and some.
Trying to smooth it out, you mean?
Yeah, that's kind of right.
Keeps keeps tracking down, but it is pretty rough.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm not sure when they'll be back, but I haven't had a chance to reach out to Tim and see if he has a date yet. And that is basically all that I have to report.
Okay. And uh Garrett was attending the volleyball game tonight and. He said he would come as soon as that was over, so we'll come back and he can fill us in on on his report. So then moving on to the mayor's report, um. Carolyn sent uh Code Red out and Katie also publicized that tomorrow, the transfer station is open Friday. Afternoon from one o'clock to three, is that right? That was that?
Twelve to three.
Twelve to three. They'll also be serving hot dogs tomorrow, um so.
You got the transfer stations will clean, you're not gonna set up in there.
It is close to being super.
Yeah, no, I've been in it.
Oh my gosh, our guys did a bunch of work and then it will also be open Saturday morning. They will have an assist. Someone there to assist people. And help direct um what what stuff goes where, so that's the information. That's important for tomorrow. Anybody that's been saving stuff up for quite a while will have a place to go with it.
But I understand they still aren't gonna be dumping in the transfer station itself. Yep, they're just gonna use.
Well, they do have a trailer in there.
Oh, they do.
They need to put some some steel sheeting in that is is disappearing, but doesn't fall down. I mean, big steel. Imagine they have to order that and install it.
A slam, you mean, so it goes into?
Yeah, right now it misses the chute, it's gone, so.
It's not gone, it just goes.
Well, the sheeting's gone.
Yeah.
Okay, so there also was a Western Dakota Regional Water System Annual Meeting uh today. And Garrett attended that, I did, uh and so did Stan. Uh this phenomenal speaker, Colonel Oakley from Ellsworth Air Force Base, and it's amazing. What's going on there, not just in terms of the amount of uh new uh airmen that will be coming in, but. All of the um. People and contractors, because they too are gonna build onto their runway and build buildings and. There's just phenomenal amount of things that are um going on. Stan, what you arrived and what did you learn in terms of the meeting?
Oh, you know, that's the first one I'd ever been to and they also just. The part that's is kind of impressive, they got all, I mean, they're just by the beginning organization that anybody is. Kind of a member or part of it and uh. They've got lots of things going and trying to raise lots of money. And they did one comment, I thought we were like.
I I noticed that too and I brought that Carolyn's um attention. She said that. She's not been invoiced, so I, or you could reach out to Cheryl Chapman tomorrow and say, hey. We're we're in this game.
Because we paid the woman.
Yes.
Well, I'm not paid. I never got an invoice, right? I mean, it was discussed at a meeting to do that and I thought for sure they would send an invoice. And if I don't receive an invoice to pay a bill.
Right, right. But I thought we did that previous year.
Yeah, we've done it before, we.
You don't think.
They're not in my system.
Oh, my goodness.
Unless they were something else. I mean, I looked up Western. Whatever it says on here, I don't know what else to. Look for to see if we paid, what other.
Yeah, that was.
Have I not written it to Western Dakota Regional Water System? I mean, right? That's what I was searching and they're not in my system.
All right, well, we've we have got to. To to research that, because I remember you made the motion to be a member of this organization, so. So we've got to get on that. Yeah, I was shocked too. I couldn't believe it when I didn't see our name in that.
So are you, are you gonna contact them like?
Yeah, I can reach out.
Cheryl's uh contact information is on that.
I actually have an email that I've saved, um so I can.
Okay.
Yeah, and I apologize, but if I don't get something. I mean, I don't pay without.
Right, that's good to have documentation, absolutely.
Oh, I have to, the audit first.
Absolutely. Okay, so then um I went from that meeting to Elevate. It was about housing today. It um the speakers there was uh again a housing, the housing coordinator for the base, Ellsworth Air Force Base. Um Black Hills Community Foundation, who's accumulating a lot of dollars for housing in our West River region. Uh a Rapid City planner person and the Elevate Housing uh Coordinator. And it was interesting uh the need for housing. And then I heard a comment from a Rapid City person that spoke that they're running out of room in the hills. And the only way to go is east. So I reached out to that, not because of that, I had that intention, to the uh base. Housing person and uh said that we need to build a relationship. We have a great school. And if those airmen are looking and bringing families in and want to live somewhere else besides an apartment house, that we've um. Got housing down here and a great school. Okay, another um item is that I received a document from. Uh the treasurer, the county treasurer, this is just informational only. They are setting up a queuing system, it's called, to help improve the long-time frustration of service wait times. In their department, so they will, there will be press releases out. I just want you to watch for them. But you're gonna actually be able to set up a time so that when you get there, instead of standing in line, you'll be in the queue.
I'm just gonna comment at this time, um Wednesday I went over to get license plates for vehicles. And I went first thing thinking, okay, I'm gonna get it right at nine o'clock. There's already six people waiting, like, okay, I'm coming back. Went over there right after they would come back for lunch. Absolutely no one in there, um so I got right in. And, you know, she had to ask my information and took my phone number and it was like that. I had this message already that I was in the queue. I I was ready to be taken at the window, like, yeah, I know, I'm here. It was kind of weird, but anyway.
That happened to me in Rapid City too. Yeah, I got the message, so I, I was like four blocks from there.
Oh.
Hour and a half later.
Oh, shoot.
And I was in the queue.
Oh, shoot.
I like went in there and there was other people standing in there and she queued in and. The people apparently, you know, they didn't use the machine. Can't say she felt really weird and awkward that they called her in while there was other people standing in line waiting.
But I, yeah, I think that, you know, a lot of that's just the transition and how things go and then there's some people there. Because there were, when I was there too, they flat out refused to do it. There was even a lady that was there helping people. Asked for your phone number and stuff and I'm not very good with that stuff, but when you get a text, you look at it and it says, you know, report back and. You know, stand in this line, so I did, but yeah, it's, I got a few looks too, but. I just kept staring at my phone. I think you figured it out.
Hey, I don't go to McDonald's anymore because I don't run one of them.
Okay, and the last um comment, um the airport steering committee met uh recently. And a couple of things I want to note before I turn this over to Stan and Rick uh there on that committee also. It's so cool, Rick, thanks for sending this, but during our fly-in in May, the Hot Springs Airport person. Had said how cool it would be if in the Hot Springs Airport they could have a sign that said sixty eight air miles to Waldrop. And I said to that airport manager, I think I know the guy that can make that happen and I got him and Rick connected. And he did it.
That happened.
And it happened.
It was a struggle. I mean, I think I worked on it to get in touch with our guy for a month. Yeah, I've done.
It worked, so the other news that I heard today is there is a fly-in. It's a Black Hills fly-in. Uh started today, tomorrow and Saturday. There were sixteen airplanes that landed here this morning. And did they go to Waldrop for lunch? They went someplace downtown for lunch, but you didn't notice them in there particularly. No, okay.
I mean, Mary, we have a line from the back. Don't have lunch through the soda fountain. They're not waiting on them as fast.
You didn't see no leather caps and goggles?
You didn't see no leather caps and goggles?
Probably with a, maybe a propeller and something.
My, read my mind, I don't come out of the garden with some little leather cap.
Anyway, uh, there should be even more tomorrow and next month. Because they're kind of doing a loop between us, Kadoka and Interior. So that's pretty cool.
I noticed a helicopter touching the wall with them.
Big one, yeah.
Is that the National Guard or who's?
I have no idea.
I think National Guard.
Yeah. I'm gonna bet they have to train some of their pilots and they gotta do so many night landing stuff and we're probably easier than upper Rapid City. But sometimes it is kind of annoying and a little noisy.
In nice weather, I like to have my sliding door open and I was sitting there talking on my phone and all of a sudden they came in and I was like, I couldn't hear anything. They was loud.
Yeah, sometimes it's wondering if it's the wind or something too.
Or if their blades are a little different.
So the reason that the airport committee met was because of interest in hangars. So Stan, do you want to visit about some of the other things that happened at that?
Well, there is a gentleman that is interested in building hangars to lease out and, uh, of course, we really don't have the roadway and that sort of thing ready, but that, that one tap to do and that will be done in twenty twenty-five, right?
Sounds that way, yeah.
So whether he'll actually do it or not, uh, he's talking about building four, like a building that would encompass four, so they have four separate rooms and so have room for four. The only comment Preston made is that pilots are notoriously, um, brutal. And don't like to pay very much for rent, so, or all that, well, but that'd be really great to, if somebody could go in and build four hangars.
Okay, and so then another, oh, we asked about the runway lights. I don't know if you've noticed, there's, they're always on. And so do you guys remember why they're always on? The, okay, it's something to do when they're flying in, they're different colors, right?
There's a certain color here, not.
Yeah, yes. So it's important to the, the pilots to have those lights on all the time, so.
Very meaningful to them.
Yes, it's very important.
Which I did not know.
No, and I thought somebody forgot to throw the switch and we were.
I forget which color you see, certain color you're.
Red.
Red.
Yeah, red. After that.
Oh, yeah, right.
I have a question on the hangars, just a couple on mine. Did one of them be like a Airbnb or something? I mean, that you could run out nightly if somebody landed in town and had a place to park your airplane or?
No, because I had a call just before the airport, or the airport conference, I guess, in Deadwood, Deadwood, right? Um, someone from California, they have a hangar that they live in, um, and all that, and they want to come out to this area and they asked about it. And I said, I don't know, you know, I would have been to try to reach out to someone and while we were at that conference, there was discussion about that triggered that, and I asked and they said, no, because anything that's built out there has to be through P A funding and fall into, you know, requirements and all that, so.
But I didn't mean, I meant just for the airport itself. They could come to town and have a motel, but I didn't know that.
So does that apply like to folks, the person that wants to build a hangar, does he have to go into FAA specs and all that?
Yes.
Now, I think that's where we'll run into trouble, that they'll be practical to build, that'd be so like much more expensive to follow all the rules.
Well, in order to get, if they were to apply for funding for that, like, an individual, I don't, I'm sorry, misunderstood now in process and that. If we were to build hangars, the city themselves, to lease up to people, we would have to follow the regulations.
So he may not.
Because we would get funding for that, but he would not.
But they still have to meet guidelines.
Yeah, there's states, yeah, they will have to meet on that.
Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to rent them if they don't, I mean, they can't just build something. Shabby.
Did you say you went to one of the meetings in Deadwood?
Yeah, it was April, March, April, April.
I filled in for one of you guys one time. With Dehaun, I thought we were gonna go meet with a couple people. Holy small way you walk in and there's about plenty of people standing there around the table staring at you, waiting to. You tell them I was a little overwhelmed, so, oh, but must have thirty departments had them, they were all there.
And the other thing that I talked about at that committee meeting was, uh, that the ground, the farm ground out there. And I laid Preston's proposal, did you see that there, Stan?
Yes.
Um. Preston was gonna, uh, and he did put, um, a recommendation together and.
Who put this together?
Preston. Are you looking at this one?
Yep.
Yeah, and he sent that to me. He was out of town for a while, but he's on the committee today. And it's just a proposal because, um, the ground is really rough. So he's putting together an idea, uh, in terms of it would take about a five-year, um, time span to actually go in, smooth that ground out, plant the right kind of stuff there, um, and.
But we should clarify that, that's just the the rough area.
Yes.
That, that we've rented out for years and years, that everybody complains about when they do it.
Right.
He would be interested in take, if he could have it for five years, uh, in his interest to have that smoothed out and, uh, if he could just have it for five years, he would take care of the, do the entire process and, uh, work the ground however he needed, because he's up, number one, he don't like the people out there hand and then they don't follow rules and they're on the runway and so I think it'd be a great deal if he would do it, because he, he would want it to turn out good and, um.
Do you think we would have to go to bid with that idea or can he put a plan together and?
I don't know.
I'll look into it, because I've only done it, uh, but we actually do this. I wish Garrett was here, so he could clarify. I don't know if it's the rubble site or there's something like that, that we have to publish in the paper and it's like a resolution of intent that we plan on doing something with the rubble site with a certain party. And, um, it's on that same order. I'm probably wrong with who it is, but, but I do know there is a resolution of intent that we can do and it just lets people know that we plan on going into contract or whatever with someone for the next five years, so that they're aware. And that way, if we don't do that, if we don't have a resolution of intent for a contract, then that's why we have to bid it every week. Okay.
Yeah, that's the thing, we normally supposed to get three, four documents, but that people bid, did, but that eight, that portion of them.
This year, actually, I think the bid was twelve hundred. It was higher than, but normally, yeah, it's not that much.
So you're saying that it would take a what of intent?
Resolution of.
Resolution of intent. Okay.
There's a publication that has to happen and then the resolution has to be drafted.
Okay, all right. Well, he put this together very hurriedly, just so that this conversation could happen tonight, so he will find tune this, because I think some of this has to be done soon because of.
Well, I think if he wants to do that, he would probably want to do something with this ball.
We don't have copies of that, do we?
Nobody, sure can have mine. I can, I can print that out.
So I can look into that and I could get, think I have time to get the resolution of intent published, so that then at the nineteenth meeting, we can take action.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good.
Was that, okay.
And then wasn't, uh, along with the airport, it's not part of the airport, well, I guess it is, wasn't Garrett and Preston, and they kind of worked on
and.
figuring out a plan.
And right, and actually Economic Development approved to own, that's industrial, sorry, no, okay. Yes, Garrett and and Preston were gonna work with Ryan on that other, because Preston backed out of that. You know, he said Ryan was the one that needed to, or someone like Ryan.
Right.
A Ryan, yeah, okay. All right, any other questions or thoughts on, um, thoughts on the airport report then? Okay.
So, are you gonna talk about the mower or? The mower?
Oh, that's on there too, I see.
Oh. Wasn't it Garrett trying to see about the surplus or the?
Was it forty-five thousand dollars more?
Four or five thousand.
Or was it four or five hundred thousand?
No, not hundred.
No. Forty-five hundred.
Yeah, like forty.
Yeah, I had a K behind mine and I thought, that must be a huge.
So, so what Garrett was saying, Stan can probably understand or explain better, a bat wing that's called mower. Um, he was thinking that perhaps that would help mow up there at the airport and he had found some in surplus and so he was wanting to pursue that. So what kind of direction do we need to give him to, in order for him to search that out and see?
So what is that attached to? This gets turned or? No, I'm guessing they would pull it with that, by directional that's out there with the snow blower.
Yeah.
Does it take a three point, is that what?
Yeah, just, no, it's just to drop our power takeoff.
Okay. So anyway, what do we need to allow him to pursue?
I would just say, yeah, a motion is seconded through Garrett moving forward and, I mean, I guess I would say he, in the motion, we're gonna spend enough to a certain amount.
And he's doing that surplus, right, so it's auction, so he doesn't know what exactly he can get it for. Is he going to the Sturgis State one, that surplus?
I actually heard this advertised on Pier.
Because that's here. It's in September. We're gonna take the stuff up there for it, so it's, it's soon.
Okay, correct. Okay, so do we have a motion for him to move forward?
So moved.
Okay, Rick has moved.
For up to how much amount? You think five thousand's a good number?
I can't remember what he was talking.
The range was supported by a thousand, so.
I don't know. Mike, what do you think?
Is there more than one there?
No. He would only purchase one.
Right, but.
Yeah, I don't know if there's like a newer versus an older one.
Well, I was just wondering if there was a couple of them.
Yeah, maybe up to like six thousand. A lot of times they'll have them, like, you know, rapid, rapid, at Box elders or something. The count about somewhere back when I worked there.
Yeah, I, I, I go up to six thousand.
Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded?
No, seconded, yeah.
Okay, moved.
Second.
For six thousand, Mike, and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.
September thirteenth is a state Arkansas in Sturgis.
Okay, so let him know we did this, so he can get on that. That would be in eight days?
There's two, um, mowers, the battery, uh, mowers.
That's true. Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Okay, I don't remember. I think that's all I have. Unless you can think of anything else. Okay, twenty-three items for discussion. Anything needs to be brought up at this time? Okay, the next, uh, city council meeting will be September nineteenth at six thirty. And we do have a meeting for executive session.
I made a motion, we go into executive session.
You could include one in parentheses as well.
Four and one?
Four and.
That we, uh, go into executive session according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two, parentheses four, parentheses one.
Sure.
Yeah. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Have a bet.
Okay.
You call us out of executive session? Does, um, do we have any motions regarding the item agenda?
Uh.
That action?
I move that we waive July, the July transfer station fee due sand or sanitation in exchange for additional service of city dumpsters.
Do I have second?
Okay.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose. Uh, motion carries. Okay, the next meeting will be September nineteenth. The meeting is adjourned.